Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, February 4th, 2019, to order and recognize that we do have a quorum of the Licensing Board tonight. Please rise for the posting of colors and the pledge of allegiance.
Detail, halt. Order, march. Ready, cut. Shoulder, march. Ready, cut. Present, march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, cut. Forward, march. Marching back, ready, step. Ready, two. Ready, two. Ready, two. Ready, two. Colors.
Thank you, gentlemen, and good evening again, everyone. We have four items on tonight's Licensing Board agenda, starting off with item number one, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of January 21st, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is an original Class B/C wine, excuse me, original Class C wine license for the Volunteer Center of Washington County, Hub, Social Good Brews Volunteer Center, The Hub, located at 303 Water Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number three is an amusement arcade license for Midstate Amusement Games LLC at Eddie's Moonlighting, 326 Commerce Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And item number four is approval of the operators' licenses, and the list is in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And being there, no further business before the Licensing Board, I adjourn.
Thanks, Craig. I'd now like to call the order, the Board of Public Works. We have two items on tonight's agenda, the first being the minutes from our last meeting in October.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Second item is permission to advertise contract 19-05 Tree Surety 2019, with the presentation by Cindy.
Good evening. This is for contract 1905, a tree surety program that we've done the last quite a few years. This year, we have a request for 305 trees to be planted, 31 in seven new subdivisions, 230 on, as part of the regular Free Street Tree and Emerald Ash Bore Response Plan, 15 trees to be planted along 8th Street where they did reconstruction, 29 trees in parks, and 15, oh, already said that one. Anyway, we also contracted, like we have the last few years, with Johnson's Nursery to grow 150 trees for the program and purchased another 29 trees separately for the parks. This is a base bid for planting, staking, mulching, and watering for 12 weeks after the trees are planted, and we have a unit price that we're having included for hand-digging holes and one for extra watering cycles after the 12 weeks it's over, if it's needed. This is part of the developer's agreement for the new subdivisions, the tree surety program is, for planting of street trees, which means they have to contribute money during development of new subdivisions for street trees to put in once the houses are built. So, we have funding for this project, which is a total of, estimated, $77,850, which includes a 3% contingency fee. That would be the total amount if we awarded the extra 14 weeks of watering, which we haven't done the last two years. Approximately $9,800 would come out of the tree surety fund. The rest of it would be paid out of capital monies, like allocated for this year, and we got another $25,000 urban forestry grant for this year. The rest of the fees would come out of the firewood sales, carryover from 2019, and donations, if it's needed. So, any questions?
Yeah, John. Cindy, you are then going to use multiple species, not just one?
Correct. We have, usually, we have three different species that we offer for the homeowners to choose from, plus when we do things like put them in the parks, or we have extra, like 8th Street, we're planting trees, we'll add different species. So, this year, I think there's a difference, like, maybe 12 different kinds of trees we're offering. So, there are, yeah, different species.
Okay, good, because I think we've learned our lesson with the oak, as far as, and also the ash tree, so, thank you.
Any other questions for Cindy? Like to entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
And with that, I adjourn the Board of Public Works.
Thank you, Andrew. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, February 4th, 2019, to order and recognize that all eight aldermen are here in account for this evening. I'd like to take the first three items together, starting off with item number three, Police Department Citizen Appreciation Awards Presentation by Chief of Police Ken Moeller, followed by Oath of Office for Police Officer Christopher S. Brook, and then Oath of Office for Police Officer Brienne L. Knutson.
Good evening. Our first citizen we'd like to honor is Scott Coffel. Scott, are you here? All right. On March 24th of 2018, Scott called the Police Department to report he was following a vehicle he believed contained stolen merchandise from our Home Depot. Scott followed the vehicle until Washington County Sheriff's deputies were able to stop it and detain the occupants. Scott cooperated fully with the officers and provided information which helped determine the suspects had attempted to steal over $1,600 worth of tools from the West Bend Home Depot, and were wanted by several other jurisdictions for over $30,000 of thefts at other Home Depot stores in southeast Wisconsin. Scott's willingness to get involved led to the arrest of two habitual criminals and prevented additional businesses from being victimized. This is Job Scott, our second citizen. Shoah Janazieh.
That's perfect.
Really? Come on! All right. Please step up here. Thank you. Shoah. On June 15th, 2018, Shoah was working at Walgreens South, assisting a customer with obtaining a money order. Shoah became concerned after the customer told her the money was being sent to bail her grandson out of jail, I'm sorry, his grandson out of jail after he was supposedly arrested for an OWI following a traffic accident. Shoah recognized the story as a common scam and was able to talk the citizen out of completing the transaction and convince them to contact police. Shoah's concern, and more importantly, her willingness to get involved, prevented the citizen from being victimized and saved them $1,000. Nice job, Shoah. Frankie Roman? On June 23rd, 2018, Frankie Roman came to the Police Department to turn in a wallet he found lying in the roadway near his residence. The wallet contained a substantial amount of money and personal documents. When the owner was contacted, he said he was driving at that very moment back to Minnesota, where he thought he had left his wallet. He was very grateful, to say the least. Frankie's honesty and willingness to do the right thing saved the citizen a large financial loss and even larger headache with the lost documents. Well done, Frankie. Rachel Strzuski? Rachel? In the early afternoon of September 16th, 2018, an 84-year-old West Bend woman suffering from Alzheimer's left her residence on foot and could not be found by family members. After initial search of the area by officers and family, the department issued a statewide silver alert and posted the woman as missing on the department's Facebook page. A large-scale search was organized, and many members of the community came together in an effort to find the woman. After hearing about the silver alert, Rachel remembered seeing an older female in Glacier Blue Hills Park earlier in the evening and contacted the Police Department to report her observations. Search teams were sent to the area, and after an extensive search, found the woman in the park, cold, confused, but alive. She had been missing for over seven hours. Rachel's observations and willingness to get involved allowed the searches to focus their efforts and resulted in a vulnerable citizen in need being found alive. Great job, Rachel. Mark Han and Jeff Schomer. On December 16th, 2018, a West Bend police officer was dispatched to a water main break in front of 215 North Main Street. That's downtown. The officer located the break, included a large amount of water flooding the roadway and sidewalk in front of the building. When the officer attempted to clear a nearby storm sewer in an attempt to drain some of the water, he fell into a six-foot sinkhole hidden by the water. The hole was filled with cold water up to his neck, the air temperature was 43 degrees, and the officer was unable to get out of the hole. Mark and Jeff witnessed the officer struggling and immediately worked together to pull him from the water. Due to the quick actions of Mark and Jeff, the officer was not injured. Mark and Jeff did not hesitate to help an officer in need, even though their action placed them in potential danger. Truly, a police department cannot ask any more of its citizens. The entire Police Department thanks you for helping our officer. Thank you. On Monday, January 7th, 2019, as many of you are aware, a subject robbed our Chase Bank at 801 West Washington Street. The suspect stated he had a firearm, threatened employees, obtained a large amount of cash, and fled the scene. During the investigation, the Police Department posted a bank surveillance photo of the robber on the department's Facebook page and asked the public's help in identifying the suspect. Proud to say the department followed a large number of leads generated by the public, so thank you to all watching at home and here tonight for those, that information that led to those leads. On Monday, January 17th, 2019, 10 days later, Kristin called the Police Department and provided information regarding the suspect's identity and his current location. The information turned out to be correct. Investigators located the 31-year-old suspect in Hubertus, arrested him for the armed robbery of the bank, and recovered a significant portion of the stolen money. Kristin's willingness to get involved and cooperation with the police ensured the suspect was safely taken into custody, the property was recovered, and the suspect will be held accountable for his actions. Because of Kristin's actions, a potentially violent suspect was taken off the streets before additional citizens and businesses could be victimized. So, nice job, Kristin. List of people, I'd ask to step forward, please, if you're here. David Yonkey, Jenna Lauderdale, Nancy Klessig, Brittany Malzon, Lynn Marie Tillman, David Wonderful. In the past year, these citizens all observed impaired drivers in the city of West Bend and took action. In each case, these citizens either followed the vehicle or obtained descriptions and contacted the police. This information, and the citizen's willingness to get involved, allowed the police to locate and stop these vehicles. In each of these cases, the drivers were either intoxicated or impaired by the use of drugs and ultimately charged with OWI. These citizens are commended for their willingness to get involved. Their actions help prevent potential vehicle crashes, serious injuries or death, and helped ensure our roads are safe for all citizens to use. Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to call up a very special group of citizens, our Crime Prevention Patrol. You all, please come up and stand in front of the council, please. As they're working their way up, I'm sure all of you are aware, this group of very dedicated and loyal individuals are what make our special events safe and efficient throughout the year. We truly could not put on the events the way we do without them. Forty-three different events participated in 2018 for a total of almost 1,000 total hours of volunteer work by these people. That alone is a round of applause. When I call your name, take two big steps forward so we can recognize both here and at home who you are. All right? Brian Metz. Brian's unable to join us tonight. Janet Ayers. Janet had 127 hours of donated time. That's great. Gordon Cleaver? Gordy? 122 hours. Wonderful. Ruth Ann Ewer? 89 hours. James Renke? Oh, I'm sorry. James, Jim, 76 hours. Jim probably would have put in some more if he wasn't snowballing the streets for us as well, so thanks for all that work, too, buddy. Jim Schutz? 68 hours. James Yurkovic? 67 hours. Tom Islandfeld? 53 hours. Jim Mears? 50 hours with the Crime Prevention Patrol. Thank you, Mr. Mears. Greg Niemann? 31 hours. Bill Islandfeld? Tommy's brother, the dynamic duo. Unfortunately couldn't join us tonight, but 29 hours of volunteer time, so thanks. We can make sure you give Bill our wishes. Mike Welner? 25 hours of time. Thanks, Mike. Charles Dennis? Charles gave us 24 hours. Steve Renke? 19 hours. Tell Pop thank you. Olivia Smith gave us 10. Miles Lazarvik, 6. And Tim Bone, who gave us no hours last year in West Bend, but gave us 365 days serving our country overseas with the military. So, thank you, Tim. Two more quick things we'd like to recognize. Mike, if you could step forward again, please. Mike is serving 25 years this year with the Crime Prevention Patrol. 25 years of volunteering to make our community safe. And Tom, could you please step forward? And Tom and his brother, Bill. Rich is going to stand in in Bill's place. You all know Tom and Bill from around the community. I'm sure you've seen him. 35 years of volunteer service to the city of West Bend. Thank you very much, and just really another round of applause for all our citizens here and in the community today.
Do you hear again? I, Christopher S. Brook.
I, Christopher S. Brook.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
As police officer?
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend?
City of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support?
Swear that I will support.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Will faithfully discharge?
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office?
The duties of set office.
The best of my ability?
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
While I'm pinning Christopher's badge on, I'll just briefly introduce. Christopher graduated from Goodrich High School in Fond du Lac. Shortly after, he went to the US Army, where he served four years. Came back from the Army. He got his bachelor's degree from Marion University of Criminal Justice. He then went to Fox Valley Tech, where he successfully completed the Police Basic Recruit School. He then went wayward for a little while, and went to Jefferson County, where he's been employed by Jefferson County Sheriff for the past four years. He's been assigned to their jail. He was looking to get out of jail, which he kind of may have been for, looking to get a little closer to home, and very happy that he chose West Bend to serve our children. And they'll be moving this way very shortly, so we gained a police officer, and we gained a whole family, three more students for you. Just one other thing I want to say about Christopher. So, he officially started one week ago. As some of you may recall, that last Monday, we had a little bit of a snowstorm. Christopher drove the night before so he could make sure he was going to be on time for his first day, and as he stayed overnight in a hotel, he gets some gas, and alertly observed a drunk driver out on the street, just saw some, or some citizens. So, it was his very first day on the job. He called, had some squads beat him, and was, beat the drunk driver, and it was his fifth offense, so five-time drunk driver that Christopher got off the street on his very first day on the job, even before he officially started.
I, Brienne L. Knutson.
I, Brienne L. Knutson.
Having been appointed as police officer?
Having been appointed as police officer.
In the city of West Bend?
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support?
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge?
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office?
The duties of set office.
The best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, while I'm pinning Brienne's badge on, I'll just tell you a little bit about Brienne. She graduated from Slinger High School. Shortly after graduation, she started at Concordia University. She's got a four-year degree that she obtained in Justice and Public Policy. After that, she also went to Fox Valley, where she completed the State of Wisconsin 720-hour Basic Recruit School. While she was finishing her senior year at Concordia, they had to do an internship. She wisely chose West Bend to do an internship with, and while she was here, she told several of the staff that this is where she wanted to work. Before she left, she came to my office and told me the same thing, and true to her words, she applied for us, which she completed recruit school, and lucky for us, and hopefully for her, that she wants to be here and is very happy as well.
Congratulations, and thank you again to all of our award recipients, and welcome aboard
Congratulations and thank you again to all of our award recipients and welcome aboard to Officers Brook and Knutson. Moving ahead, item number four is a presentation by West Bend School District Superintendent Don Kirkegaard. Good evening, Don. Welcome to West Bend. I'm glad you're here tonight, your first visit to the common council. I think you've got a presentation prepared and take it away.
I have some other copies if anybody would like them. You're more than welcome. So, thank you for the opportunity to come tonight. Like Craig said, my name is Don Kirkegaard. I'm the new superintendent of the West Bend School District. I started July 1 and it has been my privilege to work in the West Bend District and call West Bend my home. So, purchased a house not too far from where the chief lives and so he keeps me on my toes and makes sure that I am following all the rules. Before I start the presentation, just a couple of quick announcements. One is, I came from South Dakota, so I'm familiar with the winters of the Midwest and really want to give a shout-out to the street department. We've had several difficult weather events in West Bend recently and I have been extremely impressed with our street department. They've done a phenomenal job and I can't ask for anything more, not only as a private resident, but also as the superintendent of the school district. And so, thank you, police department, or excuse me, the street department. The other part is, I'd like to say is that in my short time in West Bend, we've had a very good working relationship with the city of West Bend. We work closely with the police department and the chief. Currently working with Craig and the Parks and Recs to see if we can't do some things to enhance some opportunities for kids. That is a win-win situation for both the city and the school district. So, not only working with the city and the Parks and Rec, we're also working with the local YMCA and the Boys Club to see if we can't use some of our Fund 80 funds to enhance programs throughout the area. So, thank you for your support of our district and if there's anything I can do to assist you, do not hesitate to ask. And so, I have a presentation for you tonight. It's a short one and it's not designed to tell you what you should or shouldn't do, but just to give you some information, the city, or excuse me, the school district has decided to go to referendum. And so, on April 2nd, we will go to a public vote of the people to talk about a potential $47 million bond referendum. And so, tonight I'll go very quickly with my presentation. I have everything here for you. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. And like I said, mine isn't trying to convince you one way or the other, but just to give you some facts. And so, thanks again for letting me participate. And so, the first one is just a little bit of background information of the timeline that's involved. The district started the process last year, actually in April of 2017, excuse me, April of 2017, looked at, excuse me, April of 2018, started the process of looking at a referendum and had a committee in place, did a facility summer in 2017, Citizens Facility Advisor Committee. They surveyed the public in 2018, had more questions than they were able to answer, so chose not to put it on the ballot in November, but wanted to ask, answer some questions first. And so, in January, they made the decision to put it on for April. But, the process isn't a new one. They've been actually working on it since the summer of 2017. A little bit about the background committee. They, the survey, they did a survey of the public and with that, the survey showed the community's support of a referendum for the amount that we're proposing. And so, originally, they had 80, 90, $100 million worth of projects. They knew there wasn't the support for that. They scaled it down to that $50 million range and that's what they're proposing. They used the feedback on the areas to focus on the high schools and the different areas that they would look at. And so, with that, it showed that 53% of all the taxpayers favored a new school in Jackson. 83% of the taxpayers surveyed, excuse me, not all the taxpayers, of the taxpayers surveyed that responded back showed there was support for doing things to the high school to improve safety and security. 76% of the taxpayers who sent their forms back showed that they supported doing things for our technical education area, our STEM and CTE. And 67% wanted to do things with infrastructure. So, that's the reasons why they chose the areas that they are looking at. This is the actual ballot as it will appear, the question as it will appear on the ballot. It is that the district is asking for $47 million for the sole purpose of construction of a new Jackson Elementary School, as well as improvements to the high school, including jobs, or safety to the facility, technical education, building infrastructure, engineering labs, remodeling and capital improvements of the high school, and the acquisition of related furniture and fixtures. The scope of the project is strictly that and so they can't spend the money on anything else other than those areas. So, there's no new locker rooms, there's no new football fields, there's no anything else other than what's specifically addressed on the ballot. The next one is the need. And so, with the need, they looked at Jackson Elementary and Jackson Elementary has some significant issues and so they, they looked at that as one of their primary concerns. There is a, some improvements that, for security, safety to the front entrance. There are significant parts of the building that are not ADA accessible. Ventilation to the rooms are not adequate and major building system components, including the plumbing, heating, ventilation, electrical system are past their useful service life and need to be repaired. Also in Jackson, the classroom floors, lights and ceilings are, and cabinetry are in need of replacement. There is limited space for student drop-off at the Jackson Drive. Building exterior needs improvements, including energy efficiency, single-pane windows, replacing roof sections and worn rusting exterior. Masonery, the school has been expanded seven times. It's landlocked. There are, there is no onsite parking and sections of the building are poorly insulated. If you look at the building itself, this is the current Jackson Elementary. And so, the two brown to the right, the very end of it, are both 1915 facilities. And so, when they say the Jackson Elementary is a 1915 facility, that's partially true, but there's only a small part of it that is 1915. The majority of Jackson Elementary was built from 1955 to 1968, but you can look and see all of the different additions to the Jackson Elementary. And what this slide really shows you is all the different buildings and for the most part, many of those floors are at different elevations. So, the building from 1915 to 1955 is a different elevation. From 55 to 81 is a different elevation. And so, there's a lot of different handicap elevation issues within the building, plus it's also just a hodgepodge of buildings or additions that have taken place. When we go to the high school, the east and west, the needs of the high school, number one issue is security. I know many of you are familiar with the high school and so security is the number one issue. And so, the proposal would, would have a common entrance spot and try to improve our security system for the high school. It would expand our CTE and STEM, as well as art, biomedical science included in that. Infrastructure is needed, plumbing, heating, ventilation and the electrical systems, and as well as to do some things with the library. The facility itself, if you look at, this is the high school. The brown is the original building. And so, that was built in 19, I think it actually opened in 1970 and the first graduating class was the graduating class of 1971. And so, the majority of the building was built in 1970. It's 49 years old at this point in time. The other areas, you can see a pool addition in 77, gymnasium classroom in 95, some storage addition in 97, classroom addition in 2000, storage addition in 2002, a fitness in 2010 and 2014. It says lobby storage, but it actually should say lobby and gallery. That's the silver lining gallery component there. And so, just the footprint, just to let you know that if the referendum goes through, there will be no changes at all to the footprint, that it will stay the same. It's all infrastructure from within. So, no additional classrooms, no additional space, just to do some renovations from within. The solution. And so, what the proposal looks at is a new elementary school at Jackson. It's a replacement school. It's not a second, not an additional school, but a replacement. The elementary is about 82,000 square foot. It will be built on district-owned land. It will provide additional safety and security. It will provide updated classrooms and learning spaces and breakout spaces. It will be ADA compliant. The current building is landlocked and this will provide a facility for expansion if needs, if need be, a little larger gymnasium, a separate lunchroom. And so, want to emphasize that this project, as well as the high school, neither one of them are designed because of capacity. You're aware that our enrollment's actually going south, it's not going north. And so, we're not building this building because we are out of space. We're proposing to build the building because the facilities are just not as functional as we would like them to do, but it's not a space issue at all. The new building at Jackson, if approved, would be a capacity of about 450 students, which is, we have that 385 to 400 now. We're not building it with the idea, build it and they will come. We're just trying to meet the needs of the current students and knowing that there will be potentially some growth in the Jackson area. And so, but we're not building it bigger than what we think we need in the short-term future, but it also does have the ability to expand without a lot of difficulty. And so, this is the proposal. It's a new elementary school. It is close to, if you're familiar with Jackson, it's by their community center and where you look at the green space play area, as well as from the, from the very south tip, the top of the new elementary school where that yellow line is at, that's actually the land that we just purchased. From, from the very top of the new elementary school, all the way to the north where it says green space, that's the land that we just purchased from the Village of Jackson. Like I said, three to four sections and one level, so easily expanded. The solution at east and west. If the proposal goes through, the main feature is the safety to the entrance. The main focus is safety at the high school. In addition, there will also expand the STEM, our CTE and art, popular choices for student, for students, as well as additional infrastructure. We will upgrade a nearly 50-year-old building. It has passed the usefulness of some of the areas and that, just the board felt that they don't have the, the ability to do the infrastructure needs within the budget without going outside of the budget and that's really the reason for the referendum. Two libraries on the second floor need to be updated as well. Have a more collaborative space and small group meeting space. If you look at, this is the first floor of the high school and so at the top of the slide where it shows one, that's the, the main, that's where the two towers are at facing Decorah and that will be the new main entrance to the school. So, everybody will come through that area and will be funneled into the offices right there. And so, they'll move the offices around so that, security-wise, everybody comes through the same area and go from there. Section two is our CTE classes and those are what will be remodeled for, CTE and art. The pink sections off to the side with the, the lighting around, or the little dots around the edges will be LED lighting upgrades. Everywhere where there is pink and/or light pink will also have new infrastructure for plumbing. The plumbing, the main line for the plumbing will be totally replaced. The second floor is just the libraries. And so, with the libraries, two libraries will become one and then with that, we'll take one of the other spaces and turn it into additional classroom and/or as we relocate some of the other rooms around the building that will be used for classrooms. The investment, okay? And certainly, no one wants to spend money that they don't have. Nobody wants to go to the public. And so, this is, the first slide is just an example of the mill rate history in the West Bend School District. We are currently at 7.97. It's been on a downward projection for quite some time. It shows the line above is the state average and so, since 1998, 99, we have been significantly below the state average. Currently, the state average is 9.44 mills. We are at 7.97 mills. Mill rate comparison to us and the other neighboring schools, we are the lowest in the area. We're at currently 7.97. Slinger would be next at 7.99 and you can see the other numbers, but we are the lowest. The green is the state average. If you look at historical interest rate trends, this is another reason why the board decided it was time that, if you go back originally to the very first one, it's about a seven and a half percent interest rate. Currently, we're not at an all-time low, but we're close to it. And so, the current borrowing for municipalities is about 2.75%. When we did our estimates, we estimated it at four and a quarter rather than 2.75 because we didn't want to show that it was three and it's actually three and a quarter. We believe our four and a quarter is actually a quarter to a half higher than what we'll get the bonds for, but we don't know that and we didn't want to speculate at three and a half and they come in at 3.75. And so, we put four and a quarter instead. But that's currently where bonds are at. You look at the investment, it's not to exceed $47 million. So, the project itself, we're proposing $29.9 million for the project. The district has saved 2.9 million, actually a little bit more than that. We spent some of the money to purchase the land at Jackson, so we had about 3.5. We spent some of that to purchase the land. So, the investment, 49.9 million, a $47 million referendum. If you go to the next page, then that shows you with a $47 million referendum what our anticipated interest will cost as well, because we, we know that we are going to pay back more than we borrow. And so, with that, we're anticipating debt payments, interest of about $27 million. That's based on a estimate of four and a quarter. We're hoping that it's less than that, but that's based on four and a quarter. What that means to the homeowner in West Bend or in our school district, it's a 13-cent increase in the mill rate. And so, for every $1,000, it's 13 cents, or for a $100,000 house, you'll have an increase of taxes of $13, a $200,000, $200,000 house, 26 of 339. On our website soon will be an actual calculator so you can punch in your number. If you have a $427,000 house, you punch it in, it'll show exactly what the increase is going to be. Next one is a mill rate comparison. Obviously, if we increase the mill rate, we're looking at adding a 13 cents. So, where does that put us in conjunction with our neighbors? At that point in time, Slinger will be a little bit less at 7.99. We'll be at 8.10, still below the state average of 9.44, below our neighbors, but that's where the average would be if we, if the public approves the referendum. The last two slides I have really are designed, the process that we're using is a construction manager at risk program. And so, there are a couple of ways to build. There's the design bid build and then you have a general contractor and he has all the subs. And our... In our case, we're proposing a construction manager, so we'll potentially have 35, 45 different bid proposals, and we believe that will provide significant opportunity for local vendors, local construction companies, local suppliers, electricians, to actually bid on the project. And so we think that's a benefit for everyone, that it's not just the old general contractor decides everything. This case will actually have many different bid opportunities. What we are proposing is to have an initial bid meeting with any contractors who would like to come sometime in March. If the referendum does go through, then we'll reach out again and say, are you interested? And if so, these are the different bid projects that we're looking at. And so we're hoping that the CMAR process, the construction manager process, allows for local bidders to be part of the construction process as opposed to all coming out of Milwaukee or Fond du Lac or someplace else. And so that is the extent. For more information, you can visit our website, you can email us, or you can give us a call, and we'll gladly. I know you have lots of things on your agenda, so I don't want to take any more time, but if you have any questions, I try to answer any that you have. But like I said, I'm not trying to come to influence you, I'm just trying to give you some of the information as to why the board chose to go forward with the decision.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any questions from the council? Sheriff Steve?
Sir, you got a very informative presentation. You've actually answered some of the questions I've already had. Do you know what the outstanding debt is that we already have with Silverbrook and Badger?
You know, our current debt right now is a little bit less than $30 million. It's about $29 million. There's about $6 million that will come off in the next year or so, and so, excuse me, about $6 million in interest. And so our current debt for all of our bond indebtedness is a little under $30 million, and interest with that is about six.
Okay, so we're looking at, between the two projects, about $100 million in debt?
Well, you're looking at in debt of 50 plus six, and an interest on top of that, which certainly has to be paid, yeah. But you're close to, if you do the numbers, you're right, because 70 and 30 is probably a little bit over 100.
Okay. Is this going to handcuff you guys at all as far as something that pops up in the next two years, say a roof falls in or something like that? I just, you know, it's a lot of debt hanging out there, I'm just kind of wondering.
Yeah. You know, referendum debt is a separate tax levy, above and beyond what you tax through our fund tend and our taxing levies. And so we certainly don't want to get to the spot where we don't have any flexibility. We think that that flexibility to do those unexpected ones are still available within our current system, but you're right. Once you go to the poll on this one, if the voters approve, then we're not going back for quite some time. At least during my tenure, we're not going back and asking for more money, because we've already asked that, and we don't want to ask for money just to ask for money.
Okay, that answered my last question. I was going to say, do you have anything on the radar coming up in the next five, 10 years?
Absolutely. And I'm as fiscally conservative as anybody in this room, and so I truly am not going to ask the public to do things before we do everything we need to from within our own system. And so I don't anticipate any additional debt referendums, either a operating referendum or a different building referendum in the next five-plus years.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Steve. Rich?
Thanks. Superintendent, I had the luxury of being on the CFAC committee when I was around for the first time around there, so I've got a couple of questions for you. Being on the finance committee here, as we're trying to reduce our debt, kind of hopping on what Steve said here, so we've gone down from $80 million to $47 million in debt. This referendum is going out for a one-time ask, that's equivalent to our 20-year debt load for the entire city. That seems a bit high, don't you agree?
You know, and that will be a decision that the public is going to have to make. And so, you know, there's a couple ways to look at debt. And obviously, as a school district, we don't have the ability to tax enough so that we can save and build it without going to debt. And so at least in a capacity, this size of project, and so I don't think there's any way that we could save enough money that we're going to do it without going to an ask. We have paid down, I think if you look historically, the West Bend District has tried to pay down debt earlier if possible, and so our 20-year debt is actually 18 because we paid it off earlier than we could. You know, you're familiar with, as a callable bond, you can't just automatically pay it down, you have to wait until it's callable, but we have tried to prepay bonds as much as we can. And so, you know, like I said, this is not an issue of capacity, it's an issue of how do we do the things at the high school that we need without going to the public? How do we get to a new school at Jackson or major renovations at Jackson without going to the public? Two ways to look at it. One is you can overtax the people right now and try to save, or you do it in the future, and then the people who are actually using it are paying for part of the expense. And so if I tax you more than I need to so that I can save more money, then you're paying for tomorrow's education, where if you go out and you borrow, then the people who are actually using it are paying for at least part of their cost. But you're right, it's a large amount of money, and that'll be a decision that the public is going to have to decide, is that more than we want to spend? I do know that the original proposal was 80 million, 90 million, whatever it might be, and the board said there's no way that we're going to go and ask for $80 million because it's not going to fly, and it's just too much. And so they narrowed it down as best they could and tried to identify the key areas that they thought were critical, a Jackson plus infrastructures to the high school that were critical.
So there are two reasons that we had the original, or the middle school referendum. One was for the cost savings from the enhancements to those buildings, as well as the attempt to stop the outward projections of the open enrollment. Are we seeing either of those come true from our last referendum with the middle schools?
You know, I would tell you that our outward open enrollment is still outward open enrollment, that we have not turned the corner on that. We've tried to do as many surveys as we can as to why people leave the district. We have found that the vast majority of kids who start in the district stay in the district, but if there are reasons that they live closer to Slinger, they live closer to Kiwascombe, they live closer to Germantown, they've chose to do that. But once they start in the West Bend District, for the most part, they stay in the West Bend School District. As far as energy efficiencies, I can't tell you specifically at either at Badger or at Silverbrook. You know, there used to be a mechanism in place that you could borrow money on future savings, okay? And I think the legislature changed that a couple of years ago, and the concept is great. The problem is that you save $100,000 on your electric bill, but you add 47 new computer labs, and you add all of the different things, and pretty soon, you're maybe saving money because you're using less kilowatts on the LED lights that you have in here, but you increase so much additional that you aren't saving the kind of money that you would like. One of the things that we are going to do is that with the money that we are looking at in the high school, that is the LED retrofit, the money that we are proposing to save there, we're going to put it into Fund 46 so that we can then go to Decorah and do a similar light project. We could go to Green Tree and do a similar light project so that we can use some of the savings to offset future energy efficiency programs. But you're saying that that whole concept was tried before, and it maybe didn't work as well as it should have?
Well, it was the whole, the referendum to actually update Silverbrook altogether, put in the windows, and the idea there was that we were supposed to get enough savings that were supposed to help us offset some of these future costs for the district. I guess, when it comes to the survey that you sent out, can you speak a little bit about that process? How did you go about identifying?
You know, and I believe, and that was all done before I came, and so there was a company that was hired to do the survey, and they sent the survey out to every resident in the school district, okay? There were some surveys that went to all of the teachers, and the teachers maybe didn't have, they don't live here. So all of those surveys were marked accordingly, and so that even though Mary says we want a new school at Jackson, if Mary lives in Germantown, Mary doesn't get to vote on a new school in Jackson, we still looked at her results. When I talk about the data that was shared here, it's the data based on the voting residents who responded back to the survey. So the Mary from Germantown isn't included in this data. It's the people only who live in the West Bend School District whose surveys were used.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Rich. Anybody else? Mike?
Thanks for the presentation. Well, I'll start off with a softball one.
Okay.
Jackson Elementary does not currently have a gymnasium, is that correct?
It has a lunchroom and a gymnasium together, okay? And so, which is similar to many of our schools, I believe. Green Tree is the only one, when that was remodeled, we actually have a separate gymnasium from the lunchroom. Most of our other lunchrooms, the PE facility is part of the lunchroom. And so that's currently, Jackson is the same way. So they'll have lunch in there, and they'll be right next to it for PE afterwards.
So the proposal would include a new gymnasium that would serve as both a cafeteria and a gymnasium?
There would be a cafeteria, and there will be a gymnasium, two separate facilities. Not gigantic, but there will be two separate facilities. One of the things that was on the original proposal was, do they want a second gymnasium, okay? And so that came in, and we said, you know what? We can't justify a second gymnasium and a lunchroom, even though it's nice to have, that's a luxury and not a necessity. And so that was eliminated from the proposal, and those were some of the questions that they still had last July when they had to make the decision for whether to put it on in November or not. And so those things were decided, but we eliminated that. But there'll still be two, and there's only one now. But the proposal was for three, and we said, no, that doesn't make sense, we're just doing two.
Okay. Regarding the survey as well, and Rich touched on this a little bit, but do you know how many total surveys went out in the school district? You know, with a response of just, you know, under 3,000 as a total response, I'm just curious what percentage that was of total?
You know, I don't have the total number. I will tell you that the gentleman who did the survey was extremely happy with the amount of surveys that were returned. And so that, based on his data, he has a margin of error of 1.9% based on almost 3,000 surveys coming back. Had you had 1,000 surveys coming back, the margin of error might have been 4% or 5%. I asked the specific question, what would happen if you would have had 5,000 surveys back as opposed to 3,000 surveys back? The margin of error would have changed very little, okay? And so they, I can't tell you how many actually went out, but I can tell you that at least in the groups, the person who did the survey, they were pleased with the response they got, and they felt the margin of error was there and wouldn't have been much different had they had double the number returned. But I also will tell you, this is a survey that was done last year, and so maybe the interest in a building would have been better in November than it is in April. I don't know that. So it's six months after the survey was originally, the data was given.
All right. I think two more things here. In regards to the referendum dollars and the mill rate that would be increased, I guess I'm maybe ignorant to the process, and maybe just for some folks at home as well, is this more or less a one-time shot in the arm sort of thing, or is this something that will be extended over a number of years, that that mill rate will be increased in order to cover this referendum?
It won't go up after it originally goes up that 13 cents. It won't come down year one either. So it will stay at 13 cents above for the duration. That's all based on 1% growth within the West Bend District, okay? The last five years, I believe, the West Bend District, we've had a 3% growth. The last 10 years, it's been a 2% growth, okay? So if we have a 2% growth, that 13 cents will actually go down. The proposal is based on worst-case scenario, and so that is based on a 1% growth. I would hope that we'll continue to have more than a 1% growth in our district, and as a result, that 13 cents will go down quicker because there will be more valuation to spread it on, okay? But it's not based on that because they didn't want to project it for a 2% growth, and now we only have a 1% growth, and now it's going to go up rather than down. And the same way with the interest rate, when they said 4.25%, we don't think that it'll go that high, but we don't want to say 3.5% and it come in at 3.34% because now we're misleading the public and say, well, you told us it's going to be this, and now it's this, and so now the interest rate is even more. We would rather tell you that it's going to be this amount, and hopefully it's going to be this amount, rather than the other way around.
But, so this, again, from my understanding, this isn't like, there's not a sunset on this, like the county, Miller Park County Stadium tax or whatever, that was the three-county tax or whatever it was, where after this many years, that will be paid off, and that will, in theory, not be on the?
And the exact same is true with this as well. So that as soon as this is paid off, there's 13 cents that is going towards the cost of this building. And so when this building is paid off, that 13 cents or 10 cents, because it's seven years down the road or 12 years down the road, that will go off. As soon as, and there's no way to add it back on unless you go to a vote of the people again. So that is the same as Miller Stadium or whatever we want to call it down the road, but it will go off when it's paid for, and you can't put it back on unless you go to a vote of the people for another request.
Okay. And then my final question, and they're kind of related here, but the value of the renovations to the high school proposed are nearly equivalent to building a brand-new facility in Jackson. Are we confident that the improvements to the tech ed department are going to be of that much value to our students and our community? Is that going to set us apart as the school to go to if you are interested in technical education aspects of programming?
We think we're already one of these schools, but, you know, our neighbors, I'm not going to be critical of any of our neighbors, Slinger has a phenomenal tech ed program. Hartford has a great program, Germantown and Cedarburg and Kiwascombe, and so we're not doing this to necessarily keep up with the Joneses, we're doing it because it's what's best for our kids. And so that, I'm not trying to convince you that if we do this, we are the best of the best. We're going to do it because we know that we need to update our current facilities, we need to know that, and our number-one emphasis is on safety, okay? Number two was on CTE and STEM, and number three was on infrastructure for whatever. But if I were to say that if we do this, we're the best in the county, or we're the best in southeastern, that's, I would be misleading you, and we know it'll be an improvement for us, we hope it'll be money well-spent, and it will make a good program even better, but I'm certainly not going to say anything negative about our neighbors because they have great programs as well. They've already done the infrastructure. Kiwascombe did a bond a couple of years ago, and they did some great things. Slinger did a bond a couple of years ago, and they just did a phenomenal job. And I think Germantown is just paying off theirs, and Cedarburg did one, and Grafton did one, and so everybody has done things, and they've all enhanced their programs, just like we want to enhance our program.
Great, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Chris?
I'll just join the club here, and I'm-
I'll just join the club here, and I'm happy to see a fellow early risers come on in here. So thank you for coming in front of us. One question, and then I guess just a couple of statements you can respond to. So my main question is, can you explain a little bit why the the land was purchased for Jackson before the funds were available to construct?
You know, the the land, we believe that at some point in time, we needed that facility, that land. And so whether whether the public decides to give us the opportunity to build or not, it's adjacent to the property that we currently have. We didn't see it as a tax increase, because we already had the money there, and we don't, we think we got a fair deal from the Village of Jackson. And so that it was, it took two parcels, our parcel and their parcel, and now we have a bigger parcel. If if this doesn't pass, and 10 years from now, the board decides they want to go to a different spot, we still have that land, as well as our land, and we think it's more valuable because of it. And so it wasn't putting the cart in front of the horse, it just really was the opportunity that the land is only available X amount of time. We thought it was important for us to purchase it at this point in time.
Got it. So I guess my my comments, I guess, are more more feedback for you to bring back to the board. I remember when I got my survey, and you probably would be able to find mine, because it has scribbles and, you know, big writing on it. The reason that I did that is because I felt that those questions were a little biased. There was little little to no options for negative answers or options. It was just rating, well, how much would you really enjoy, you know, this or that? So that's feedback to bring back to you guys. I know you keep saying that you're not here to convince us, but you do keep using the word "need," that we need to have this. So just be aware of that when you're speaking to the public. And what I've been hearing, at least, and luckily I'm not in this, on the school board and about your shoes, is that the high school, I get that, I get the I get the improvements that need to be done there, but that I'm hearing a lot more negativity maybe about Jackson, for whatever reason. Is there a reason that those weren't split? Maybe just two separate referendum questions, and why are they put together?
You know, it's one district, and so we really looked at it as a district. And when I talk about need, I truly say need, because that was the board's perception as we need this, okay? It's your decision to find out if we need it or not. And so when I talk about need, I'm not saying need in the sense that that you have to vote yes or no. I'm saying that the board, when they chose to go forward with it, those were the needs that they looked at and go from there. But as far as two separate, that was discussed, but we really looked at is that we are the West Bend School District, and that includes the the part as far south as you can go, the part as far east as you can go, and west as you can go, and all of the kids who go to Jackson potentially go to the high school. And we want to have good facilities for all of our students, not just one group. And so we really looked at it as, it's a district and not a individual community, and so our, all of our funding goes into the district pot, and this one should as well.
Yeah. Thanks, Don. Anybody else?
I had a couple of easy ones, Don.
Okay.
Do you know our school districts in Wisconsin require to pay prevailing wage on the projects?
I do not know. I do not believe there is a requirement that guarantee, you know, so sometimes if you have a federal project, if you have a Native American project that requires certain funding, you have to do things. I I I'm speaking without 100% accuracy, I do not believe that that's accurate.
And that answers my second one. I was going to ask if you've already chosen the construction manager at risk, and if they're, you know, signatory to a union, because I do know that it that would, it wouldn't be beneficial to the many of the local trades we have here, because there aren't that many union organizations. So that's good. Lastly, did Bray Architects, did they look at a Jackson remodel? I'm just thinking, similar to Barton School, that someone has purchased, will remodel and continue to use. Did they look at remodeling and what, you know, what was the ticket item on that?
So, and I know Judy was on the committee, and I think, Rich, you said you were on the committee as well. I believe that part of the discussion they had was that the cost of a remodel, depending on what level they looked at, was going to be close to the cost of a new facility. And so that obviously depends on what all you look at in the remodel, so that if you do some superficial things, it's going to be less expensive. If you truly go through and and try to gut the whole facility, bring the whole facility up to AD issues, that the numbers that I saw were comparable numbers for a thorough remodel as opposed to new construction. And with that, you have to remember, there's a variety of different levels of remodel. You can do this, or you can do this. And if they did this to bring it up to new standards, it was going to be similar to the cost of a new construction.
Thanks, Don.
Yep.
Ian?
It does look like the prevailing wage for school districts, school districts are included in local governmental units, so it was repealed for them as well.
Yeah, I would, I would think that that's the case, that that it will not be a closed-shop union organization. The district has the opportunity. Even though we have a construction manager, the district approves every single contract. And so, and we have to have good rationale as to why we won't take the low bid. And the fact that one is union and what is not union is not a good reason. Part of the reason we went with a construction manager at risk is we think that there are opportunities for our local contractors to be part of this project.
Mike, one more?
Just one quick question, that your your comment made me think of this. Is the Jackson Elementary School as it sits, is it scheduled to be demolished if this were to go?
You know, we certainly haven't made any decisions at all on that. If if the referendum does pass, we will continue to use the Jackson Elementary until the new school is is built. At that point in time, the district has no intent of keeping the facility, so we would either sell it, we would, we would figure out, just like we did with Barton, what can we do to put it back on the tax rolls as quickly as we can, and offset some of that revenue loss, and go back into the district funds.
Thank you. Last call. Thank you, Don.
I appreciate the opportunity, and I truly do mean that, I appreciate the the cooperation that I've had with the city as far as since I've been here, the 1st of July. So thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Don. Good night.
Yep.
Okay, jumping ahead to item number five, is approval of the minutes from the regular common council meeting from January 21, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items six through nine are the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 10 is a presentation regarding transportation and future borrowing by City Administrator Jay Chambeau. Hello, Jay.
Hello, everyone.
Exciting presentation coming up.
You bet.
I said that seriously.
I know you did. And I said, you bet, seriously, although following Don and 47 million and lots of good questions are, mine might not be that exciting. I'm going to, actually, I'm going to start with, before I jump into the PowerPoint, I'm going to start with, and and both of these were added just before your meeting started to the agenda, so my apologies to that, but they should be out on our system now. This document is just a bulleted list of some of the content that's in the in the PowerPoint, so when you're...
Being seen, Jay.
Pardon?
You're not being seen.
Well, that I can't do.
Let's get caught up.
Here it comes.
Thanks, Chris. Did I mess it up? Oh, I forgot to minimize the control. Thank you. So, font-wise, this is really tiny, and you have it in your packets, and it's out on the system, the Acela system for the for the future, but wanted you to have this information so that as you're supplying your constituents with data for newsletters and other conversations, you can refer back to this document. It's just a bulleted, again, list of detailed information that's in the PowerPoint. Specifically, and I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm going to talk through the what got us here. In 2020, there is just over $1 million that's coming off of our debt levy. You've heard this before, the talk of brighter roads ahead regarding borrowing following off, and and the fact that we're going to have some capacity to do some additional things. At our last annual budget discussion, through 2019's budget, we talked about next steps. Two of those next steps were future-year CIP, an additional borrowing, in addition to the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee's recommendation. So that that is what is leading to today's, tonight's presentation. That data is all in here. It it talks about an increased borrowing beginning in 2020, going up to $3 million. And then, in addition to that, about the fifth last bullet there, talks about two additional fundings of significant fundings for road projects, at $2.7 million in addition to the $3 million in 2021 to fund 7th Avenue, and $1.8 million in 2022, the following year, to fund 18th.
You missed the very last bullet point, Jay.
Tell me.
In addition to all of that, our total debt would continue to decline, even, I think you get into it with your PowerPoint a bit, but even with these additional road maintenance projects, additional annual capital projects, our overall debt continues to decline, which is pretty, I think, unusual, in a good way.
Right. And that, in large part, is because of the $1 million that's dropping off of the debt structure. Us jumping into the PowerPoint, you're going to see charts that share the fund balance numbers have increased over time, the last few years. The total debt for the city has decreased. Those two are nothing new that you've heard in the past. All positive trends that the city's been working really hard at to to try to accomplish. The third bullet might be a bit new. Our our TIFs have begun to crawl their way out of some some negative times. TID 4 and TID 6 are doing great. As you both, as you all know, those are both donor TIDs. They're contributing to TIDs 5 and 9 in particular, and the other TIDs, just in time, have continued to experience some growth, and to the point where they're now a positive, less negative, if you will, drain on the budget. We're we're down over $1 million on the annual levy that that they've been at in past years. So their 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 growth has been significant and helpful for this process. The unassigned fund balance continues to grow as well. The most recent data that we have is the 2017 data. The audit report for 2018 is not yet complete, so the 20, it's 25.11% at the end of 2017. You recall that our goal is 30%, which is the median of all those similar-sized communities. The minimum benchmark by put out there by GFOA continues to be 17.5%. That's the green bar on your chart, and you can see where our growth has been significant in the last few years. Most recent discussions that we've had, if we're able to contribute on an annual basis about $200,000 from unspent annual funds and other monies that are available, we should reach that 30% mark in five years. So that's the the most recent trend and and plan that we have to accomplish the 30%. So we've heard from council in the past that attempting to get to 30% while projects in other areas are lacking, it's probably time to slow that growth, and that's why we're talking about a five-year plan to get there. This next chart really shows the same thing. It's total fund balance over median fund balance. Our our lines, our bars on this graph are approaching the median, and again, within five years, we anticipate reaching that goal. Debt service to non-capital expenditures. This is the ordinance that's included in your packets that was attached in advance of tonight's meeting, a threshold of 20%, and that's been put in place for some time by the council. That that 20% bar depicts this median line, again, of of similar-sized municipalities. We're the green line on top, we're trending down at the same time that the median has has crawled up a little bit, but our our threshold is still 20%. We're on our way to get there. It's a little more fuzzy as to the prediction, as to number of years. Carrie probably wouldn't be comfortable with me saying a five-year period of time, although I'm I'm hopeful that that's the case as well. It's really formula-based. So as as we borrow more or less, and as our total growth in spending occurs at a faster or lower rate, that's when we'll hit that goal of of 20%. Certainly trending in the right direction. Capital projects history, I put this in so you can see the last significant spike that that was spent bonded for within the city was 2013, and then a little bit in 2014 at $2.5 million. That was for the Police Department remodel project, the significant remodeling project that occurred here resulted in these spike years. And then, I'll say, the the city and the council, city staff really got serious about controlling spending and driving down debt. I can see borrowings in that $2 million, a couple of years, at $1 million and 1/2, and then the last two years, 2018, and projected into 2019, or planned for 2019, at the $2 million mark. Our total debt was at $80 million as recently as 2014, and then has driven down significantly in the last few years. We're now at $47 million in 2019. That's the blue line. Total debt and GO debt are almost the same, because we only have a little bit of water utility debt remaining on the books. In this measure, we're actually already better than the median community average at at 70 PMP, or Pavement Maintenance Program funding, this is the engineering funding that has been occurring the last, according to this chart, six years. You can see the the growth has been, as the council committed to growing that PMP fund over the last few years, has been reflecting upward, but it does peak out at 1.2 million the last couple of years. We've been, so 2019, we're just over $1.2 million spending in in PMP, and this proposal tonight will show that a path to spend more than that to react to the road demand that's out there. So increasing $2, $3 million on an annual basis, dedicating $2 million of that to city street projects. In addition to that $2 million, it's important to to note that a plan to accomplish 7th, it's probably the street that staff, city staff hears the most about. I know, talking to some of you, you've heard the same regarding complaints about the condition of 7th Avenue. So we would be adding $2.7 million in 2021, and that would be the year that it would be reconstructed, to this $3 million to complete 7th. Max and his team have done a great job of planning already for that, and also 18th. They have secured federal funding, not at the 80-20 threshold that we've that we enjoyed at the, for the first chunk of 18th, but at a lesser threshold. It's just what was available at this time from the feds. It's 53-47%. So in order to accomplish 18th in a in a near future, so 2022 is the construction year planned at this time, according to the state's timeline, we will be borrowing an additional $1.8 million in 2022, over and above the $3 million, to accomplish that road as well. So that's probably the other most significant. If you remember Max's presentation a year ago, and we referred to Max's Three Roads, and Long Range Transportation Planning Committee has heard about Max's Three Roads over time, that would be knocking two of those three significant projects out in the next few years.
Jay, can I interject just one sec?
Yeah, for sure.
Just to put that into perspective, increasing the capital borrowing to $3 million, in, I think it was 2015 and 16, we borrowed $1.5 million for roads and for other capital improvements, and about a million of that million and 1/2 went directly to roads. Here, we're looking at doubling that, dedicating $2 million to roads, $1 million to other capital projects, whether it's fire trucks, roof replacement, boilers, whatnot, in addition to 18th Avenue, in addition to 7th Avenue, and still continue to reduce our debt. So the belt tightening that we did just a handful of years ago was intended to hopefully get to the point that we're at actually right now, today, that when we really skinnied up our borrowing, it was tough, and it was tight, and it wasn't good long-range planning. That's why we did it for a couple of years, but knowing that if we did that, we had significant debt falling off, that we could get back to a reasonable number, something I think that we can 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 be proud of and look our constituents in the eyes and saying, we are now planning well, long-range.
Thanks, Mayor. And then the last two bullets just indicate what the mayor just said, that there is still $1 million in this program that would be earmarked for the other departments, Fire Parks, Public Works, some of the equipment and other facilities that we need to maintain within the city. This chart depicts, it's a chart that was produced by LRS, it depicts the payment schedule. So as we have the red... So, as we have, the red line shows the future payment schedule, including the borrowings that are targeted from the years 2020 through 2029. That's at $3 million a year, plus the two large spikes that I talked about. They're built in here, so, so Ellers does a nice job of feathering in those payment schedules so that there isn't significant peaks and valleys with it. You can see it's a pretty level on an annual basis payment bar. This blue line is if we didn't, if we stopped borrowing right now, which isn't feasible, and you could see our debt would, would trail off into nothing within a few years. This chart is a similar chart to the, to the last one from a total debt standpoint. You can see, if you look closely in, in 2019, this is where we're currently at, at the $47 million that I mentioned, and then the, the same 10-year borrowing structure takes us between this, this line and 2028, 2029, the 10 years' worth of borrowing. From there, again, if we stopped borrowing, would be the significant drop-off, and that's, again, not likely to occur, where we can't stop borrowing, but that's what the chart from Ellers shows, that it, that it tails off down to nothing. So, halfway through the chart is the 2029 stop, and as the mayor mentioned, this is where the future plan of borrowing $3 million a year with those two major roads still drives our total debt down from $47 million to $28 million by, by 2028.
And it would level off about at that amount if we continued to borrow the $3 million. So, we're at the little elbow there, your 2028 would level off. So, in, by 2028, in a matter of 15 years, we have gone from a little over $80 million down to $28 million in debt.
The debt capacity of the city, we, we talked sometimes about what the total debt load is, and that, as you all know, went from 80 to 47 million. We could borrow up to 140 million. So, the, the blue at the far left shows 140 million, and we're certainly not proposing that we try to get there, or that we would ever attempt that, but that is the capacity of the village at this, at this point, to borrow an additional $80 million. You can see the green, the green far left in 2018 is where we currently are, and then as it drives down to the right, again, shows it with the borrowings that are put in, put in place with this plan, $3 million a year, plus the two large borrowings. And then, again, the, after the middle part, the 2028, if we stopped borrowing, how it would trail off down to nothing, again, not likely to do that, but important to note that, assuming we have some growth, the debt capacity of the village grows, and then these other blue, red, and tan lines depict different debt capacities. If we're at the 50% limit or the 40% limit, you can see we'll be below the 30% limit as soon as the year of 2022. This slide relates to the proposed policy that is in your packet as well. The, the policy is that we would be at, the proposed policy is that we would be at 10% below the median. So, the median's about 40 right now, 10% below would be at 36. Again, with, based on this chart, we would, we would hit that, so it's relatively soon. It's, it's not a bar that's out there significantly at this time with this plan, but as other borrowings might come before the council over time, you'll have to address those based on the policy. So, if we end up with a, a new TIF district, for example, we've been talking about pursuing some industrial land for a, for a TIF, if we're to pursue that, that item would come back before the council. Over and above this chart, those obviously are not built into this at this time, but they would be, our charts would be amended to incorporate them if, if the council saw fit to move forward with such a TIF. We would have capacity, significant capacity, to do that. Next steps, you get a chance to discuss and fire questions at me like you did, Don, earlier, and discuss the items that you, information that you've had, have a chance to review the policy, and then we'll put it on, on the agenda for a March review and action. And then, with your directive, assuming that the five, five-year plan is something that you want us to modify to include the $3 million and the two additional roads, Seventh and Eighteenth, we begin working with department heads on that next, updating the five-year plan. We did have a Long Range Transportation Planning Committee this past Friday, so some of the aldermen had a chance to sneak peek at this data, and Alderman Jenkins asked that I include the five-year plan, so that was attached to your, to your packet on Friday as well, that if you have some questions about where we were and some projects that might be in the queue that are coming up, you can, you can take a look at those. Most of them are roads. It does show a nine to $11 million need on an annual basis, and even at the million and a half, it was significant. At the $3 million level, it's less significant as far as the debate and discussions that take place at the department head meetings before we ever get to bring a proposal back to, to you folks. Obviously, continuing to prioritize department CIP needs is, is something that will continue. Questions that you have with me?
Chris?
So, I've been thinking a little bit since we had our Long Range Transportation meeting last week, and I, I guess what I'm struggling is really when it comes down to the roads. I understand the borrowing math, how taxpayer-wise, aren't really going to see too much of a difference, but to me, it's, it's the need versus the want of the roads. When we get that list from Max, you can see that there's a timeline. If we kept our current pace for when we're fixing these roads, they're still going to get fixed, whether, I know that in his timeline, it's sped it up some roads by about a year or so, others by a little bit more. If, if I got anything out of the advisory referendum result, it's that there wasn't a resounding response one way or another, and I feel like that's what we're kind of sitting with. I know our PISA rating is slightly above average. It's great. We've talked to Max about putting in this additional capital. I, I don't think it was going to grossly increase our PISA rating that much or not. So, I guess I really struggle on the return on investment piece for why we're putting X amount of more dollars into these roads. I feel like all it does is speed it up slightly faster. We're never going to appease people. They're always going to be upset about their roads, and, and I get that. So, I, like, like I said on Friday, I'm, I'm not sure how I feel about this, as far as putting the extra capital just in, in the roads and differing our plan than what we've been doing.
I could respond to it a little bit. As far as the question of Max, and I know the question that we left that committee meeting of Max was, do you feel more comfortable with this spending plan for roads, the stepped-up spending plan, if you will, than our current plan? And, and the, the answer's a resounding yes. That might not surprise you, but he is not comfortable at the million-dollar mark, the 1.2 million-dollar mark. And Max will quickly point out, and has to the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee, that there are strategic times to spend money on roads, and, and having available funds to do some of these bigger projects and to maintain, and that's what the PMP is really for, to, to crack fill and to seal our roads at appropriate times that lengthens the longevity of them, is what he, what makes him nervous. I don't know if I would say what keeps him up at night, but Max isn't here to defend himself, but he, he, he is, and I specifically talked to him about that after the committee meeting. He is much more comfortable at a $2 million moving forward mark and knocking out these two big roads than where he is now.
Thanks. I can speak to the $3 million number, you know, and how that's broken down. Maybe we will massage that over time. Maybe we'll find out that instead of spreading out, buying a fire truck over a couple of years, we'll buy a fire truck one year and do a little less in roads. But, in general, I've spoken over the last five years to several larger organizations, like municipalities, or it's actually private business, and I asked, what, what do they include for capital improvements in their infrastructure? And on a $25 million budget roughly, depending on what we all include in there, spending $1.5 million on capital improvements, less than 10% is really thin. You're progressively getting in worse and worse condition. The number I kept hearing was about 15%. So, at $3 million, we're right in that, in that neighborhood. It seems, you know, the flip side could be true. If we've got $190 million in capacity, why don't we just go out and borrow 190 million bucks and, and fix every road all at one time? That's probably not reasonable either. To me, this amount is good financial planning. Again, some folks may say, "Let's do a little bit more." Some folks may say, "Let's do a little bit less," but in a, on a percentage basis of, are we fixing it as fast as it's falling apart? This, you know, and you mentioned it, slowly gets us ahead. So, I, I personally think it's a good number, and maybe that'll get tweaked a little bit year in and year out, but I think our debt policy is to do just what Jay said. It doesn't limit us from doing any large individual project. It just makes sure that it's a public discussion when that, when that occurs. Any other questions? Mike?
Jay, can you speak at all to the, the idea of timing for borrowing this money? Is, if, if we borrow it in the year 2020, do we have to use it in that year? Let's assume that 2020 rolls around, and it's just not a good time to build roads. Are we stuck with that money and, you know, is it going to be more expensive to build roads than it is today? You know, there's some, there's some unanswered questions that go on into the future, and if we're committed to borrowing this money, what are we committing to?
Yeah, that's a fair question. And, and you're, you're not, you're not binding future councils, so that's one thing that a council cannot do. You can't bind a future council to spend or borrow for $3 million. You can't bind a future council to spend $2 million of that on a road in 2019 for 2020. So, so it'll still be an annual decision. It'll still be an, an annual arm wrestling, as the mayor mentioned. Maybe it's 2.1 one year, maybe it's 1.8 another year for roads. I smiled a little bit when you said, "It's not a good year to build roads." Max would tell you it's always a good year to build, to build roads. We are a little nervous about some of the infrastructure costs going up with the Foxconn projects in, in the southeast part of the state, that that might drive up some product costs. He's, he's seen that a little bit already with some bids that have come back. We're hopeful it doesn't impact us too much on the current road projects. As you know, we have eighth going on this year. But there's, there's probably strategic times to spend more money on roads and strategic times to spend a little less money on roads, to, to your point, and I, I guess I would hope that you would have the faith in Max and myself to make a recommendation of council when that is.
And I guess the other comment that I'd like to make is I, I'm, you know, really, really impressed, and I wasn't part of this council when you guys started tightening up the belts around here, but I, I gotta say, I'm, I'm happy to see that we are in the categories that we are for a lot of the, you know, regarding comparatives to other Just all, all the numbers make me feel really good moving forward, so I, I would be in, in support of taking the opportunity while we're in a good position to do some positive things.
So, from here, I guess, chew on it, think about it, and we'll bring it back. First meeting in March, is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
All right. Great. Thank you, Jay. Move along to item number 11. Do you have a presentation, Alderman Hugaster?
No, by nature, took care of that.
All right. A report by Alderman Hugaster regarding the Park Rec and Commission meeting, and meeting was frozen out.
Cancelled, yeah.
We'll catch you next month. Item number 12 is tabled. Our attorney, Amy Seibel, had to reschedule, so we'll jump ahead to item number 13, which is entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute, Section 19.85, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. City parcel tax key 2.91.1119.242.0024.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made. Second, Stephanie, could do a roll call vote, please?
Alderman, Alderman Butchlook?
Hi.
Alderman Christian?
Aye.
Alderman Shvali?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Mado?
Aye.
Alderman Kist?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And we will adjourn right from closed session, so have a great evening, everyone. Good night.[1543.83]